Bagley.
Here.
Mr. President is absent.
Everyone, please rise to the plumb allegiance and remain standing for our march.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Today has been words for the day. And it is black history. And in honor of black history, I would like to pay homage to Laxton Hughes. So first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about this review. And then I'm going to cite one of his poems. Laxton Hughes was a great African-American poet and novelist. He was the earliest innovators of the then new literary art form called jazz poetry. Hughes is best known as a leader of the Harlem Renaissance. He famously wrote about the period that the Negro was involved, which was later paraphrased as when Harlem was involved. His poetry and fiction portrayed the lives of the working-class blacks in America. Minutes he portrayed as a pool of struggle, joy, laughter, and music. One of his poems that he's most known him for, although he wrote many, many poems. One was called "I Too See America." "I too see America. I am the darker one. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes. But I laugh, and I eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen.'" Besides, they see how beautiful I am and be in shape. I too am beautiful."
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. Look forward to your testimony on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate.
Item six, to consider a classy liquor license for Chibovino located at 1101 Jackson Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Wendy Becker, and our company name is Chibofamilia DBA Chibovino. Address is 1101 Jackson Street, Omaha, 68102.
Thank you.
And my name's Don Doty, and I'm a member of Chibofamilia.
And your address, too? Your address for the record as well?
Yes. The business address is 1101 Jackson Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Wendy and Don, thanks for being here today. And I appreciate, Don, you afforded me the opportunity last week to come by, and you gave me a nice walkthrough and what your vision is. As a longtime business owner in Omaha for the two of you. So you're going to have Italian food. I want to just give you the platform. If we're all hungry and we want to go eat at 1101 Jackson, number one, there's plenty of parking east across the street with Park Omaha. So anybody that comes down to the Old Market, you got parking right there. So just tell us a little bit about your restaurant that everybody listening today.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Really, the vision for the restaurant is going to be Chibovino. And chibo in Italian means food. And vino, imagine we all know in Italian is wine. So we appropriately named it Chibovino. And it's going to be, I guess, real, we want to do Italian. It's going to be, I guess, more classic, classic Italian, not Italian-American is our vision for the food. The hours of operation are going to, we're going to do dinners only to start out because of, we want to get our feet underneath us, and we want to make sure the quality of service and food that we put out is top-notch. And then we look to expand to possibly being in the Old Market, a brunch possibly, and then doing some lunch, lunches as well. And we're really excited about that. Wendy?
I formerly ran a couple of different restaurants in Omaha and all about the service. So, you know, never, ever going to miss the service piece. That is, I mean, obviously, people make mistakes, but that is what we're going to strive to not do. Give great service and great food at a value and hope to make a lot of friends down there.
And I know you're each other's better halves, so it's a family investment in District 3 in the Old Market. And touch really quick, Don or Wendy, if you would. There's a banquet room there as well if people want to have big parties there. It holds, is it 80 or 100, I think you said?
You know, I mean, it kind of divides into three spots. So you really could do something as small as 20 up to probably, I'd say, about 85.
Okay. And I'm not a wine drinker, but I know that's a big theme, obviously, with the name of your place. And anybody who wants to have a good bottle of wine and some good Italian food on a nice winter or summer day. And I think eventually, it sounds like you want to maybe go to lunch, but you want to get your base started and get up and running and then look to hopefully expand it from there.
Yeah, just have to make sure we have enough staff so that we can make sure that the quality and the service pieces never, you know, slack on.
I can say that my tour there, that that was 100% certain. That Don took me around and showed me and explained everything. So I know that's the kind of service will be when I go eat there at times when you're open. So appreciate you being here today. I'll make a motion to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second. Note for the lights, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven, to consider a class A liquor license for Tokyo Sushi located at 1215 Howard Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Randy Gao with Tokyo Sushi at 1215 Howard Street. I'm doing business Tokyo Sushi, too.
Great. Here to answer questions?
I'm sorry?
Here to answer any questions, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized. Is this another, is this another commercial?
Will be. Good afternoon, thanks for coming down today. I'm not a sushi eater, but my kids are. So they definitely will be coming down and checking you out. What are your operation hours going to be? What are you looking at?
From 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., mostly every day.
Okay. And have you done business anywhere else in Omaha?
No. This, we've been here for, I mean, since 2013. So I'm just getting a different partner, I mean, I, different partners or different companies. So I'm kind of getting new license for the new company.
Well, I wish you the best luck. And if I ever want to try sushi, I will come, but I'll make sure that my kids are big sushi eaters. And I'll be glad to support this today for your application. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion? Motion to approve in a second. Note for the lights, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a special designated liquor license for the Maha Festival located at Stinson Park on July 28th and 29th from 11 a.m. to 1 a.m. with music until 11 p.m. each night.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have Emily Cox, the proponent by Zoom. All right, try that.
There we go. Hi, Emily Cox, Maha Festival. I'm at 725 North 14th Street in Omaha, 68102. And I'm here to answer any questions about Maha.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents.
Johnny Johnson, Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I would like to oppose this with a stipulation of, when I grew up in Omaha, Nebraska, Mr. C's restaurant put a 4-H champion Angus in front of his business. Can we bring our newer cows from South Sudan a part of this program to be part of it?
Liquor license for the Maha Festival, right?
Yeah, the festival. It's for three days, the 28th, 29th, and 29th. Mr. C's put his black Angus, he took $20,000 in the front so we could explore as kids. We want to bring a cow from South Sudan that's going to be entering the state fair and the same festival. Can we attach that to this program?
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
I'll second that. It's a big day for District 3 here.
That's District 2.
Emily, you want to talk a little bit about your lineup? I know you just announced it.
Yeah, we just announced it on Friday, and the feedback from the public has been outstanding. We have two amazing headliners. Friday night will be Turnstile, a punk band that will apparently bring out the mosh pit. And then the Saturday night headliner is Big Thief, some indie darlings, people say. So we're really excited to have two really high-caliber headliners for Friday and Saturday. We've typically had a lighter day on Friday, but we right-sized it with the talent. And so we're expecting over 13,000 people over the two days of Maha.
That's great. In a two-day format, right? With music stopping at 11 o'clock both nights?
Yep, both nights stopping at 11. It used to be midnight, but we thought, let's take it easy on ourselves and just call it an hour early and get an hour more of sleep.
Great. Yeah, we'll see you there. Thanks.
Awesome.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Ida Point West located northwest of 196th Street and Stone Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Caleb Van Wielden with Lampar and Nielsen, 147110 West Dodge Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 10 through 15 can be considered together for Briggs Place Replat 12 located southeast of 48th and Dodge Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District and GC District to TOD 2 MX District. Items 11 and 12, ordinances to rescind the ACI overlay District and PK District. Item 13, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 10 through 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. Along with myself, Zach Reinhardt, with the applicant is here to answer any questions that you guys might have as well that I'm not able to answer. We are looking at the property on the southeast corner of 48th and Dodge. The northern half of the property is currently zoned ACI. The southern half of the property is currently zoned R7 with PK overlay on the site. We are requesting a rezone to TOD 2 MX. Currently, the site has abandoned, what used to be abandoned, gas station there, and there's some old offices, Pittman Building, and then there's some residential units on the south, residential single-family homes on the south. The applicant has acquired all pieces of the property. We are looking to rezone and replat into one lot. We are proposing a multifamily building with 329 units. We have garage under, parking garage under the building, and there's some on-surface parking in the northeast corner of the property. And then there's some also improved street, on-street parking. And then there is a drop-off and ride-share space on the north end off of Dodge as well. One aspect of this property is that the Pittman Building, which was the animal veterinary hospital there, that has some historical significance. So part of the project is that building is staying. As you can see in this rendering, in the brown section here, that's the Pittman Building. So that is being refurbished and back to some of its same historical context. And that will be the office for the multifamily building. So that's kind of a cool aspect of keeping some of the history along Dodge Street and then integrating it into the overall apartment complex. We do, we have had a couple of neighborhood meetings, the last one being this fall. At that meeting, I do not believe anyone showed up, but there were some attendants in the first one. With that, I'll make myself available, any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Zach Reinhardt, Access Commercial, 1303 South 72nd Street. Here to answer any questions you guys might have. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple minutes or less.
Sure.
So there was talk about neighborhood meetings and nobody showed up at. And I appreciate your quick response from, there was some complaints about squatters and people in the houses that weren't supposed to be there. And just talk briefly about the actions you took when you found out about that through our office.
Sure, so we received a complaint last Wednesday from a neighbor. They reached out to your office as well as to our office and let us know that there was some issues with homeless folks in the properties. And so I sent my maintenance staff over and got a full report on exactly what was going on. And then I subsequently made a trip over. And we have, since that complaint, have secured all of the entrances to all of the buildings. And the neighbor that did have some concerns, I corresponded with that neighbor. They have my contact information, and I've welcomed them to reach out and communicate with me directly. Happy to hear from our neighbors and want to be good neighbors in the area. So all of the buildings are secured as of this morning when I drove down. And we've got a crew on-site the last couple of days doing cleanup of the different parcels. So we've addressed the concerns that the neighbors had. I actually got a response from our neighbor this morning indicating that he appreciated the work that had been done. So we'll continue to do that throughout the project if there are concerns that neighbors have.
And can you confirm when you believe construction will begin, the demo of these houses?
Yeah, so we're targeting demolition to be in the next four to six weeks, depending on utility disconnects and coordinating some of our subcontractors to get out and actually do the demolition work. But we have engaged all of the utilities that currently serve the properties. And as a clarification, that demolition does not include the Pittman Building. I want to make that very clear. The Pittman Building is staying as an integral part of the project. But all of the homes and other structures on the parcel will be demolished. The site will be fenced, and construction start we expect in May. This replat, or this final plat is kind of the next step in finalizing some of our financing and other pieces of the development process.
And I'm glad you mentioned Dr. Pittman's building. That'll be the opening and the soul to this new development, which is a great piece that that history will stay there. I know we talked about that in prior meetings. I know also that you're going to make sure that in the next four to six weeks before that construction that you're going to have eyes on it to make sure. I know there are multiple parties arrested for trespassing after that call came in. So that's good that the neighbors are diligent, and I appreciate you responding the way you did to go board up them houses. And if there's any other issues that come up, then you'll make sure they get taken care of. But that, keeping Dr. Pittman's hospital there, that I'm looking forward to this project. It's right on the Orbit Line, and it's right next to the Med Center. And it's going to be, it's going to be a really tremendous project. So appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights, is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 16 through 19 can be considered together for property located northwest of 204th Street and Laramie Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone this property from R5 District to GO District. Item 17, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay District with a waiver to Section 55-587 minimum site area. Item 18, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay District to incorporate that property into this district. Item 19, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan to change the future land use map and designation for this property.
Public hearing and vote on items 16 through 19 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Council, Mr. President. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Trio 15th and Farnham, tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located southeast of 15th and Farnham Streets.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, again. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the Trio Ownership Group, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding our project.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Item 21, an ordinance to create road maintenance district number 2022-01 to improve Quail Ridge Circle from Skyline Drive to its terminus.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is David Changstrom. I represent Rick Phillips and his wife Susan Campbell. My address, 10306 Regency Parkway Drive. Rick and Susan live in this proposed...
Push it up all the way there and we'll come on. There you go.
Thank you. Rick and Susan live in this proposed road maintenance district. And they don't necessarily oppose the project, but their stance would better be characterized as perhaps neutral. I understand it's early in, but I like to get my notes on...
Yeah, just for clarification, we'll do proponents and opponents.
Well, he supports it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that's what I was getting at. He supports it. We just would like to make a note that he also supports a fair and equitable split of the costs for it. If you look at this district, and maybe it makes sense to do it like this. Rick's house is the one with the dot on it. And the proposed road maintenance district is for Quail Ridge Circle, which extends along here. Rick, if you count up all the frontage here, there is approximately 1,000 feet, 1,100 feet of frontage along Quail Ridge Circle. Rick only has 20 feet of that, 24, I believe. And right now, the proposed assessment that Rick received would be a 9% share of the cost when he only has 2.3% of the frontage. He doesn't have access to Quail Circle. He has access to Skyline. His address isn't even Quail Circle. So I understand that, again, we're early in on the process. Costs will be assessed later. But as you go forward, I'd just like to point out that the expense here on Rick is not really commensurate with what he's getting out of the improvement. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against him fixing the road, but...
Just your name and address, too, for the record?
What?
Your name and address for the record as well?
Richard Phillips. My wife is Susan Campbell. Yeah, we're...
And your address?
Address is 1010 Skyline Drive, which is on the other side of, this is actually our backyard. And there's no way we could, all the other streets along this improvement have driveways. All the other houses have driveways. We don't have a driveway. We don't have any, we only have access for like 20 feet, like he said. And there'd never be a driveway, it's our backyard. We, we don't believe we should have to pay an equal share of, just because our, there's a little bit of abutment. There's no use that we could ever have of that street. We can't, not going to drive a car when, you know, there's no... So it seems unfair that we get the equal amount of payment, which, and this thing they sent out, they said it's set $11,000, which I don't, I imagine it's going to be worked on as they work on it. But, so, I mean, the idea of improving the road, I understand. It's a pretty sorry road. But that doesn't do improvement any, for our property. Our property is worth no more because of that road being there. Because we're, we have, our access is to the front, 1010 Skyline Drive, and no access to the back.
Okay. So you're supportive of the project, you're just contesting the allocation of expenses?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents today that want to speak? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. First, thank you for coming down. I just, I also want to be clear that this council, this body does not have the ability to vote on individual properties and then dictate what everybody pays. We, we don't have the power or the authority to do that. And I see Heather, I think, hiding back there. I could barely see you. Heather, could you come up? Just because I think it would be really important. The property owners in this, the RMD District actually vote on how they want to do this. There's two options. They can vote on square footage of the property, or they can vote on just equalizing. And sir, if you could maybe just have a seat, I'll give you the opportunity to come back up if you want. I'll just let Heather explain this. Heather Tippy Pierce. So he'll have the ability to vote on it, but it'll be the majority of the people that live in the RMD that the majority of the votes determine the cost share. Is that correct?
Heather Tippy Pierce Public Works. So our, we have a default policy, and that's basically what was presented to the property owners at the time of the initial notice. So our default policy, and I'll put a map up here to make it a little bit. Yeah, it's up. There we go. Pull this out a little bit. So the default policy of the city is that with, with properties such as this... So the default policy of the city is that with, with properties such as this one, where you have more of a curved or a boulevard-style street, the benefit roughly is equivalent, even though the frontage may not be. So we divide by even split. That's not to say that the property owners, as you alluded to, couldn't vote to have a frontage or some other apportionment according to benefit. The only thing that we cannot consider is a, a recommendation for assessment according to property valuation. Courts have thrown those out. But pretty much any other methodology that conveys roughly equivalent benefits to the benefit received by the improvement, we could consider. So what's been presented right now is just kind of the default.
Right. And where, and where does it go from here? Now it would go, there'll be an objection period, is that correct?
That's correct.
This is what starts the objection period?
Correct. Since this is an RMD, we, and it does not require design, we've solicited bids. So should this move forward in a couple of weeks, you'll see a publication resolution that will be able to open a protest period. So then, property owners that are opposed to the project for cost or any other reason can lodge an official protest petition with the city clerk. At that time, because we've already solicited bids, we'll be able to give them actual costs as opposed to estimated costs.
Okay, thank you. So the time to, if you want to object, that the protest period, when the protest period opens up, that would be the time to voice the objection. However, if the neighborhood has sufficient, or the RMD, the lots that are affected, if they have the majority of votes, that's what this council has to vote on. We can't vote against or change what they've actually set up and voted on in the district.
That, that's correct. We would bring the recommendation for the assessment based on what the, the district is asking us to do.
Right. And our city council isn't able to say, oh, by the way, we're going to reduce this landowner's amount, nobody else's.
Not sitting at a city council, no.
Thank you very much, Heather. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heather, if you could stay there for a second. Put the map back up, please.
You got it.
Thank you. So as we always hope that these are pretty cut and dry, then we have another one, and they're not. Clearly, by this map, you have somebody who isn't against it, but they question what their benefit is. And clearly, by this map, you can see it's not equal. Sixteen looks like it's on a corner. Eleven, it's the entire backyard, but twelve, I'm just not seeing it. So my question is, when we talk about if it's too late to even begin, you have to have a majority to start the process for the RMD, correct?
That's correct. So based on the frontage to the project, seventy percent of the property owners petitioned the city to get to this point, which is just the creation of the district. We, we don't anticipate that flipping, but it could during the protest period. However, we do not have to assess the affrontage. We could, but we do not have to. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I clarified, when we have, you know, this kind of not-quite-lot-and-block kind of curvy type of street, we default to that per property. We could always change that recommendation.
So you got seven out of ten people agree to moving forward with this RMD?
Roughly.
Roughly?
Yeah.
And do you believe that if you changed it from parcels to square foot, you would still maintain the majority of those along this RMD that would want to move forward with it?
That, that would be up to the neighborhood to come to consensus on.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I know your last name's not Campbell, or is it, sir? That was up here earlier? Phillips?
My last name is Phillips. My wife is Campbell. We're married.
Okay. Come on back up if you would and give your name and address.
And as you can see from the map, it's completely inequitable. I mean, we have no...
Yeah, no, I seen that pretty clearly.
Yeah.
Can you state your name and address?
Ten-ten Skyline Drive. Richard Phillips.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask you, in the beginning, when this was, I assume, presented by a neighborhood champion who came around and said, hey, I haven't seen this road. I don't know. I can just imagine that probably is in pretty bad shape. Did they, did somebody knock on your door? How did this work?
I think they may have, but I, I don't, I don't think we ever looked at whatever that occurred in their door.
Okay.
I didn't know anything about it going on until they sent this letter from her office.
So you, so you didn't vote for or against it?
I didn't vote for, no.
You didn't, you didn't know what it was?
No, I didn't know what was going on. And I didn't know for sure that they're going to put it by equal for everybody that's owns a piece of land, even though this land, there's no way we ever have access to use that road for a road.
Do you have a gate back there? Like maybe a gate to go to that road?
No gate. There's no gate. There's a fence.
There's a fence?
There's a fence with no gate, and there's some trees.
Well, still early in the process. These are always difficult, trust me. Like years and years difficult, some of them.
And there are some big, if you look on the map, there are some big properties too that have like two-hundred feet.
Yeah. So here's what I would suggest. Go back to your neighbors and talk to your neighbors and let them know, I'm not against this, but maybe there's another way to go about assessing how we're going to move forward on this. Okay? That's the recommendation I'm going to give to you. Because here's what happens. We have people like yourself who just said you didn't know anything was going to happen, but the city will already start the process. They'll get estimates. They'll, they'll go with what the neighborhood champion says and move forward to assess you whether you're for it or against it. But if you're against it, go talk to your neighbors. Tell them why you're maybe not in favor of it like they are, because they probably have a driveway that abuts to it. And I think, I believe Heather say that that process can change on how it's assessed. And that's what I would recommend to you, because we will see this again in front of us.
But it also seems pretty inequitable, just because you're the smallest owner, that they're going to...
Yeah.
Everybody's going to vote that, well, I mean, why not vote? I should pay it all, you know? If they have the vote control...
So, so this is what I'm telling you. I agree with what I just seen on the map.
I know.
So there's a way to go about equity and what you should be assessed for this RMD that some argue you benefit from regardless, even if you never stepped foot on it. But that's what I'm suggesting you do. Go ahead and take that route. You got counsel with you. Have them work something out, and maybe it's not too late to go back to the drawing board. Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Heather, can you come back up?
You want me to go down?
No, you can sit down. Thank you. Can you put that map back up?
Sure. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
Can you zoom in on that back corner, that ten-ten where this gentleman lives?
Evidently, very slowly.
That's great. So with your pen right next to twelve, show us where exactly the portion of his property is, just so if anybody's watching out there, they know how much of... How far is that? How many feet, if you were to guess?
That is, hang on.
Okay.
Yeah. Twenty-four point eight-four feet.
Okay. So, and that's the back of his property. I've actually been on that road in my OPBD endeavors, so I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
And so he's got a fence in the back part of the yard, is that, I believe he said?
Yes.
So he enters from the front, and his square footage, or I'm sorry, his assessment is based on that twenty-four feet and change on the back corner there.
It's just based on the number of properties in the district.
Right. But his assessment is equal to everybody else that's touching that.
As a benefited property owner.
Okay. I appreciate you coming down here today, and I, thanks for zooming in on that just to show. I mean, it's, it's good to see that, at least for people out there watching what we're talking about, so, thanks, Heather.
Thank you. Yeah, it would seem, it would seem there's room for further discussion on this one amongst neighbors to come up with a fair solution, but that's not really our equation yet today. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion for today? There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item twenty-two, in ordinance to create road maintenance district number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two to improve South Sixty-seventh Avenue from Dodge Street to Farnum Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. Your name and address?
Name is William Bresnahan. My address is one-one-eight South Sixty-seventh Avenue.
Thank you. And here to answer questions or do you have comments?
I'm just here to say I hope we get our road fixed.
Hopefully, yours is straightforward. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
This is exactly the same as the, what we just discussed before, correct? Heather, if you could come back up?
Sure. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
And again, this is a road. There was a neighborhood leader who kind of led the way. I'm not sure if it was Mr. Bresnahan or not, but the neighbors have, have decided that they wanted to form an RMD, and at this point, there will be a protest period in the event that anyone that lives on the road wants to protest it. But again, I just want to reiterate, this project is no different than the agenda item that we just voted four to three on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the neighbors get to decide whether or not they want it to be assessed by frontage road, and it looks like on this one, they did. The neighbors, I mean, I'm looking at this, and the neighbors have decided they're going to assess the properties based upon...
Frontage.
Frontage. And so in the last project, they could do the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just kind of wanted to call attention to the fact that it's not the city council or yourself that dictates or decides, or can later change it for the neighbors. The neighbors vote to choose whether they want it by property or by frontage, correct?
Yeah. We have default policies, so if the neighbors don't tell us anything or give us any indication as reference, we can still move forward, give them a ballpark, ballpark idea of what costs would be. But yes, at the end of the day, if the neighbors vote for frontage or for even split, that is the recommendation we honor.
Okay. And, and I just still want to be clear, the city council can't override that decision. Can we?
Not as a city council, no.
Thank you. I just wanted to let people know what we actually have the authority to do, and not whether, whether we like it or not, it, we don't have the authority to change their decision. So right now, there could be a protest, and somebody from this neighborhood could say, I would like to protest because I want it to be equal. And they would have the ability to do that at this time.
Once, if this moves forward, once we pass the publication resolution and we actually publish, that starts that. So it'll be the second action, not this action, but yes.
Okay, but there'll still be a protest time, and a time where a neighbor could say, I don't want it to be equal by property, just like in the last one.
Yes.
And I want, you could do either one. And so the vote today, either whether it's the last vote or today's vote, that could change based upon the vote of the property owners.
And so what we're really deciding here is, do we move forward with the district? That's really the only question that we're asking right now.
We're not assessing anyone, anybody. It's not a done deal after today.
Nope.
It's just allowing them basically to start the process.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heather, I might have some questions for you.
Sure.
I want to be clear, this is not the same as the one we just had in front of us for the simple fact that we don't have people's backyards that are showing no benefit to the road being taken care of as an RMD. This one also clearly shows, after opening the documents, that the last one, every single person, regardless of what your benefit was to the RMD, got charged the same amount. That means the gentleman who showed up was getting charged six-hundred-and-fifty-foot, sorry, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars per foot of what his assessment would be, unlike his neighbors. So they are not the same. This one is a street that I would assume by what I just quickly found in thirty seconds that it would be the frontage. And I also see that there's different assessments, because it's based on the frontage here for each single property, which again, would make it totally different than the one we just had. These range from eight-thousand to thirty-five-thousand. The last one ranged from twelve-thousand to twelve-thousand. They're not the same. This isn't trying to hold up progress because of the street policy that isn't clear yet. We know that, because we've had so many discussions on properties that, or corner lots, or whatever it was, that it's just not ironed out. And that's not Public Works's fault. The street policy's new. Omaha's been here forever, but the street policy hasn't been. So when you have people come in front of us, and they're logically saying, I do not benefit, and I don't want to pay six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a foot, there's something to pay attention and listen to. Because what I do know is, as we sit up here and vote for stuff, sometimes it gets down the road too far to turn around to make changes for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Heather, can you come back up?
Thanks. And can you open that map up?
You got it.
Of Sixty-seventh Ave, south of Dodge. So the east edge of Sixty-seventh Avenue, that's UNO's property, correct?
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then the other one, two, three, four properties on the west side of Sixty-seventh Avenue is one including Mr. Bresnahan's, correct?
Only three.
Three?
There's four parcels, three properties.
Yeah, okay. Got it. One-ten South Sixty-seventh Ave. Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. So looking at that, that's, we had conversations actually before council on, the Public Works Committee that I sit with a couple of my colleagues, were still, this came from prior to, to a city ordinance being passed. What did the city cover on these projects before?
The city covered nothing.
Correct. And now it's twenty-five percent, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so from where it came from zero to where it's twenty-five percent now, and I know you've given us good material, and we've had great, long conversations in our Public Works Committee, that we're still a work in progress on this. Is that fair to say?
Sure.
Okay. Appreciate you being here today, and I, Mr. Bresnahan, I appreciate, I know I heard from you back maybe in October on getting this process going, so I appreciate you coming down here today, and that I'm going to support this today going forward, and I'll look forward to hearing from you if you got any other questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to continue the conversation, these are exactly the same processes. Mr. Bresnahan stated, all he wanted is his street fixed. And I'm sure his neighbors, at least seventy percent of them, agree.
All of them.
And then at the, at Quail Ridge, all the neighbors want is their street fixed. And there are at least seventy percent who have started the same process. One group has decided to go in one direction as to how to pay for it, and it is them that is paying for it, not the city that's, that's paying for it, or we're not charging them for it. And one group, at this point at least, has chosen to take the other road and do it by equal assessment. That can change. This is the beginning of the process. This is the beginning of the process. They are the exact same processes or processes, right? So they are the same. They have just chosen to take different routes as to how to get the end result, which is a nice road. So wanted to have that on the record.
Ms. Melton.
Thank you. And I want to say, yeah, the, this just starts the process. So now the, one neighborhood can change. I suppose somebody right now could ask to have the properties be equally assessed. I'm guessing, I'm guessing the individuals don't want to do that because it looks like at least two of them is the board of regions. It's UNO that's paying for the vast majority. So I'm guessing that's why we want frontage road because they've got the most frontage, so. Right, they're paying for half. And so unlike the other, the neighbors could still decide that they want to go ahead and go with frontage property too. It just allows that conversation to start. And so that's what we're voting on for both of these, is to allow it to start, to allow it to get published, and then to allow a protest period to have those discussions begin on how they want to fund it. Because it could be that the property owners in the last RMD weren't even aware. They were just going with the default. And so once it's known to them, they can sit down and have the discussions. So that's why I support always getting, getting the process started and allowing those neighbors who want to fix their, their streets and they're paying for seventy-five percent of it, however they allocate the expense, we need to allow people to at least get the process started. And, and so that's why what we're actually voting on today is exactly the same. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be supportive of this item today as well. I did support the previous item also to get that moving through the process, but hopefully, I know Mr. Phillips is gone at this point, but he, the discussion wasn't lost on him, that there are concerns about equity of what was proposed there. And I'm sure that'll be a conversation going forward, back to his neighbors as they go through the process. Because it is unlikely that would be approved as presented today, given the case he made, I think. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one, this one is different. This one I will support. And for the same thing I've said for a while, sometimes this process starts where things are presented to neighbors that aren't accurate. And they get the votes they need to move forward. You have to have a majority on an RMD or SID to move forward. So as an example, if you have ten houses on a street, you gotta get six of them to move forward. And sometimes that neighborhood champion does not show up and knock on your door with all the correct information or what it will cost you. Because we as a city don't know what it's going to cost you, because we can't predict what the cost will be. And then what happens as we get down the road and we sit here, because we will sit here as the Board of EK at the end of the day, and somebody will say, well, if you had have told me that in the beginning, I wouldn't have voted for it. So if you don't ask the questions now before the neighborhood champion takes over and moves this forward, it will not stop. And that's what I'm saying. They're different, they're presented different, and sometimes upfront, the story is different to get the votes they need to move forward. That's why I didn't vote for the last one, but this one clearly, there's, there's a benefit here and the assessments are different and, and people want this. Great. I'm glad there are people in the city that can afford to pay their own roads that the city should have been paying for anyway. But I'm great, I'm grateful for that, because there are a lot of people that can't afford to fix their roads. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Motion, a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number twenty-three through thirty-three were held on February fourteenth. No further lights. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
We'll need to remove item number fifty-three from the consent agenda in order to make an amendment requested by the department. So first, we'll take public hearings on agenda items number thirty-four through fifty-two and fifty-four through seventy-four. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Again, this is thirty-four through fifty-two and fifty-four through seventy-four.
Yes, sir. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street. Items fifty-five to sixty-four, you say is on the list?
Yeah, which, which item are you addressing, Donnie?
Number fifty-five to number sixty-four. I wanted to address those purchase and grants concerning North Omaha. Mr. Palermo, who said, we already running out of land, we would like to add to these, those grants that when Mayor Fahey annexed Washington County, he did something wrong. We want you to also put on there, annexing Dutch Hall Road and the county line, move it over so that we can benefit from that. So I told Mayor Fahey when he was buying that land...
All right, these, these items do not pertain to annexation.
There's a grant here on this one here and a purchase of the mayor and some of these program, fifty-five to sixty-four.
It does not pertain to annexation or Washington County.
Yeah, but that's what we want to add. You saying that's what you guys want, but we got to add some...
Donnie, you have to speak to an item that's on the agenda, okay?
Okay, well, I'll come back to that. When you say, we want to put our part, part in that of this grant from fifty-five to sixty-four, we want that land purchased for North Omaha, Dutch Hall all the way to the Washington County line. And they keep telling me downstairs, we can't move the county line. And I say, we can.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Louise, you went to twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. It's the cap on the agenda as a resolution, the climate action plan.
What number are you speaking to, Louise?
I thought it might be on here. I couldn't find it.
It's not on here, you can't, you can't speak to it.
Oh, it's not on here.
It's not on here.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers on these items? And these items only, I might add. Seeing none, public hearings closed. Is there a motion? I'll second. Oh.
Sorry, thirty, thirty-fourth through fifty-two and fifty-fourth, seventy-four.
Thank you. I'll second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fifty-three is a resolution to approve the temporary use of State Highway Seventy-five from Reddick Avenue to McKinley Street on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, between the hours of twelve-thirty PM and three-fifteen PM for the Florence Day Parade.
Public hearing on item number fifty-three is today and the vote, and I'll explain the amendment here, which is from the Public Works Department and the community, which would put the Florence Day Parade on the day they most desired, which would be May thirteenth, as opposed to what was listed here, May twentieth, and alter the time a little bit to make sure it's staffed appropriately. Are there any proponents today on number fifty-three? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seventy-five, a resolution to approve the nomination of Marshall Taylor Street as a commemorative street name on Lake Street from Thirty-second Street to Thirty-third Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-five is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Hamilton. Haven't seen you in about twelve hours.
My name is Willie Hamilton, located at forty-two hundred North Thirtieth Street. And my organization is Black Men United. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you also have others here to speak?
Yes.
Great, come on up. And if you'd like to address and tell us a little bit about a background too about Mr. Taylor, that'd be great.
Sure. Waisel Davis, forty-five sixteen Laramore Avenue, Omaha six-eight one zero four. Mr. Taylor, just an amazing man, you know. If you've ever had a chance to... Down a little bit? Okay, good, good, good. Yeah, Mr. Taylor's an amazing man. I met him as a teenager. I'm fifty. I was like sixteen, seventeen when I met him. He had the bookstore on Thirty-Thirty Lake. When I first met him, I think it was more like a hair store, you can buy hair products. And with onset of the gang activity in that area, he came up with a brilliant idea to create a bookstore there. Because he figured like if we were more educated, we would do better. And so once he put the bookstore right there on Thirty-third, I mean, it just changed the course of a lot of our lives, you know. Mine's in particular, by providing those books to us, you know, to learn the knowledge of who we were, who our ancestors were, the roadblocks that played in history. It did amazing work for us who were struggling. And like I said, I attest to it. It helped me develop. And I would, I honestly don't know where I would have been without that bookstore and his mentorship. So it was more than just coming in and purchase a book. He would actually, you know, sit there with you, you know, have you purchase the book, go read the book, come back, discuss the book, and on to the next. And it was just like a continued relationship. And I met so many community members because we all were in and out discussing the books, discussing, you know, how to better ourselves and improve our situation. So, I mean, I just honestly wouldn't know where I would be without the bookstore, Mr. Taylor.
Great. Thank you for sharing that story.
Yes, you're welcome.
And just to add, he was not just owner of a bookstore. He was more than that. He was an educator. He was a community leader. He was an interviewist that you can go in and talk to you about your personal problems. As well as, he would definitely give you a book once you leave. You couldn't go in the store and have a ten-minute conversation with him. So when you went into the store, you don't probably be there for an hour or two. Yeah, because he has so much information to share with you on regards to, first of all, your history and where you came from. So I think it's a no-brainer to, to approve this. So many people want it, and not just in Omaha, but across this country. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Willie, and also Waisel for coming up and putting forth this initiative to have this street naming done in honor of Mr. Taylor. I did have a opportunity to meet with Mr. Taylor some years back. I can't remember exactly when. But I can attest to you that he was very knowledgeable about his community, about issues, about the need for the community to gain access to knowledge. I went in with a girlfriend of mine and I, we both went into the shop, the last encounter I had with Mr. Taylor. We went into the bookstore and we were looking at books and, and things like that. Mr. Taylor took to us and educated us on a different, a different variety of things. Even took us downstairs to look at a video regarding his, his history, where he came from. He also shared with us the value of knowing your history. Now, the young lady that was with me happened to be a Caucasian young lady. And she was an educator. She was going to, she was attending UNO. She was completing her doctoral degree. She was also a former police officer. And so just to give you some context of how that conversation went, he was able to wet her fancy and also wet mine's. But all in a nutshell, Mr. Taylor is a huge giant in North Omaha. And I am so happy that this opportunity for the community exists. And I'm in full support of this street renaming.
Is that a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seventy-six, a resolution to approve the nomination of Bernard E. Turnbull Senior Street as a commemorative street name on Grand Avenue from Fortieth Avenue to Forty-second Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-six is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Japlin Wells, forty-fifty-two Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Here as a proponent, and you want to share a story with us too?
Well, Mr. Turnbull has been in the community for thirty-five years. He opened a day early learning center thirty-five years ago. He's educated the community, not just the children, but the families. He does not disenroll children when they're, when the parents can't afford to pay. Not only has he educated the children, but he has brought jobs to the community from some of those parents, has never laid any of the parents off, have kept employment. Just overall, a really good guy for the community, has helped children in every level, has helped families on every level.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you today, ma'am?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Just want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, especially during African-American History Month. This is such a great honor to have this street renaming done in, in honor of Mr. Turnbull.
Thank you.
I would imagine thirty-five years ago being, and I mean granted, I don't recall this myself personally, but I imagine thirty-five years ago being impactful in a community that is primarily underserved. Him having the ability to provide food and nourishment for that community, that, that was an awesome thing.
Yes.
And that alone calls for a salute. I am in full support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to move that?
To support this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seventy-seven, a resolution to approve the nomination of Stephen L. Mercer Street as a commemorative street name on Evans Street from Thirtieth Street to John A. Creighton Boulevard.
Public hearing and vote on number seventy-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Tyree Russ, and I'm here for my family, the Mercer family, thirty-five eighteen North Thirtieth Street, Time Out Takeout. I'll give you a little bio of Stephen. He's passed. Stephen was always an imaginary, even as a child. He was a visionary. And at twenty-two, that same vision, spirit led him to purchase and obtain ownership, as we know as Time Out. That's today. Nineteen eighty-five, along with the leadership of Time Out, he also took the opportunity to revisit his passion of music and became a manager of a local band called The Jam Squad back in the days. Shortly after that, Stevie, excuse me, Stephen's desire to bring the community together by presenting free concerts in our parking lot back, back in the days where he also, oh, he had Babyface. It was a while ago, but we also did concerts in the back lot. And as an owner, Stevie, he celebrated food. He loved it. He took his passion to the next level and created a catering division for Time Out. The catering division served large and small Omaha businesses, as well as hundreds of private events at schools, community organizations, and weddings. Stephen was able to turn his passion into his greater success. Time Out Foods, for what most native Omaha refers to, Time Out Chicken. And now is a household name in Omaha, as the secret family recipe has garnered several awards and recognitions. Largely though, his success at Time Out, Stephen was able to give back to the community through several collaborations in local schools and community organizations. A little-known fact, he also sponsored several scholarship opportunities for local youth. These young men and women would enter the restaurant when, in their younger days and bring their report cards, and they'd be just excited, just to show him. But he served three generations in the black community. And also his accomplishments and the name will continue to live on. Every time you say Time Out Chicken, you'll think of Steve Mercer.
Thank you. And just so everybody knows, Time Out Chicken's the best fried... And just so everybody knows, Timeout Chicken's the best fried chicken in town, right?
That's right.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? So this is about the street renaming, right, Donnie?
I was only, do the name stuff and all that stuff first? Okay. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, I support all these programs that you have just mentioned of the street naming, but I'd provide some caution here. The caution would be, as you may want to see, we are trying to resurrect our 4H, our 4H program, the resurrection of that.
Donnie, this has to be about the street renaming for Stephen Mercer, okay?
Mr. Mercer, Mr. I played basketball with Mr. Turnbull, we played together at Tech High School, which is a wonderful young man. And I know Mr. Taylor at the African store, which I brought some, he brought artifacts from Africa, I brought some myself from Africa. But my argument is this, we want to start the 4H program again, so we can get benefit from that as well. So can you add that as part of this? The 4H that we grew up with.
Donnie, it's got to be about the street renaming, okay?
Yeah.
You're off topic.
No, I was, the reason why I was trying to tell you that, Frank Brown named the city park after the Gabriels Union. Have we got anything out of it?
Thank you. Any other proponents on Number 77? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Ms. Johnson, your light's on, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Ross for bringing this to our attention to nominate and call the renaming for Steve Mercer. I would be remiss if I did not pay a huge tribute to his mother, which is in the back of the room, Arma Jean. Hi there, how you doing? I had the pleasure of meeting Steve Mercer's mother in my family church, and we, we attended church every Sunday quite a bit. And Arma Jean and I did one thing on our church responsibility, which was to be ushers for the church. And she kind of showed me as a young lady what that mean and what that, how, how much that was a privilege. That was my first contact with Mr. Mercer's mother. But I went on to learn more about the Mercer family, and they are huge giants in North Omaha. They're most notable for Timeout Chicken. They definitely made a huge impact in terms of economic growth. What an honor and a privilege to have this street named after Steve Mercer. I move that we accept this.
There's a motion in a second. And I'll just say, I wasn't kidding when I think it's the best fried chicken in town, it is awesome. And I'll share my one story that was coming to my head while you were speaking too is, that's where I first met one of your most famous employees. This goes back many years ago now, but that's where I first met Simone Sanders, who used to work at Timeout Chicken, and of course now is of national prominence. In fact, coming back to Omaha here shortly to speak at the Young Professionals Summit. So that was a neat recollection I have too of your, of your place there. And I, I know it's in transition a little bit, but hopefully the recipes will stay for a long, long time. Thank you. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 78, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Brian Sparks for stabilized sewage sludge services.
Public hearing on Number 78 is today, proponents, please.
Is this the reading about Exarban Nights?
No.
I'm sorry. When we, no, there's no more on Exarban Nights. That's what I got to confuse, I'm sorry, I thought this was a reading about Exarban Nights and our 4H program, sorry.
Okay. Any other proponents on Number 78? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 79, an ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement for the J.F. Bloom Building Site at 4435 and 4431 Florence Boulevard.
Public hearing on Number 79 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 80, an ordinance to approve the Grover Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on Number 80 is today, proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Bob Griffith, Paul Cameron Choman, Johnson Beller, 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. If you recall, we were in front of you on January 31st, I believe, for the plan. This is the agreement to implement that plan. This is the pediatric dentistry, the former Coco Key, and Ramada Insight. So with that, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
And Don Seaton City Planning, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 81, an ordinance to approve the Exarban Senior Living Phase III Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on Number 81 is today, proponents, please.
Don Seaton City Planning, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Michael C. Carter, 11506 Nicholas, Suite 103, 68154, just here to answer any questions we have.
Great, thanks. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Oppose or for?
This is proponents. Seeing none, any opponents?
I'm trying to remember that President Reagan was telling me when I was working for him, how to prepare for a senior citizen. Excuse me. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. On Number 81. Mr. Ferguson, you might be able to help us out on this. If... I think I could help even better. The senior citizen that we're, as us baby boomers, we're having problems trying to figure out when and whenever you're gonna sell us Benson Park.
We're not selling Benson Park. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
One public hearing can be held for Items 82 and 83. Item 82, an ordinance to approve the Second Amendment to the Trio 15th and Farnum Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement. Item 83, an ordinance to designate an enhanced employment area for the Trio 15th and Farnum Tiff Project Plan.
Public hearing on Items 82 and 83 are today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 84, an ordinance to accept the bid of Garrett's Lawn Service in the total amount of $94,400 to provide landscape maintenance services for Abbott Drive.
Public hearing on Number 84 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? It's gotta be to lawn service, Donnie, okay?
Not Mitch Bridges, how do you come and work for us in North Omaha Department?
Nope, nope.
I'm sorry.
Public hearings closed, next item.
Item 85, an ordinance to accept the bid of Chopper's Lawn Service in the total amount of $59,900 to provide landscape maintenance services for the Ramble Ridge neighborhood area.
Public hearing on Number 85 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 86, an ordinance to amend Section 21-7 of the Omaha Municipal Code to amend the process of advertising in city parks.
Public hearing on Number 86 is today, proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for the opportunity to share about this information. This is the mechanism that would allow us to propose through resolution and is anticipated in the next meeting, the opportunity to make modifications to allow for city-run and Parks and Rec specifically administered sponsorship and advertising in park spaces. I've sent the proposed guidelines to the council, and those will be a public opportunity for review on the next council agenda. We've invited many of our partner groups that were the motivation and those who are asking for this potential opportunity that aligns with a lot of what's happening around the country, as well as additional opportunity in some private settings to create additional revenue to support programs, and very specifically, youth programs happening at these sports complexes and city facilities where there would be an opportunity for additional revenue, as well as then additional revenue for the city. So happy to answer any other questions, but certainly bringing more of the detail through those guidelines and that public opportunity next council meeting with those proposed guidelines.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? It's gotta be to advertising in the parks, and no, we are not selling Benson Park.
I was only gonna answer Mrs. Melton's question last time about the park. I'm willing to my associates to donate five electrical golf cart so he can experiment with them to see how much money he can save. She had mentioned that the golf carts.
That's off topic, Donnie.
No, it was part of his parking.
That's not the topic right here, not 86.
So you don't want an electrical golf cart? We can get them for you.
That's not what we're talking about.
I'll get you four of them.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, Items 87 through 107 do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero, meeting is adjourned at 3:20.